All right. Hello, everybody. We're going to reconvene. The we're calling it the LaSalle application that was continued from last month. Who wants to take the lead from your group?
I will. Thank you.
Okay.
So first of all, thanks, everybody for having us back, giving us some time to work on a couple of items. And I know you stopped by to do the site visit as well. We had a good planning, planning board meeting last week or a couple of weeks ago and received conditional approval. Couple of items that I believe we've already sent in and have have those satisfied, but we have one follow up needing to confirm that. So last zoning meeting, we reviewed all the approval criteria and a couple of open items were the odor and the site visit. So I wanted to cover the odor first. You know, just want to reiterate how, you know, how clearly we understand the odor. And I think those around the call on the planning board are, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but it's extremely important to us and we know it's important to the town. So we're going to do all we can to to mitigate the odor. And from an odor migration plan standpoint, that's going to be a work in process until we go live and the renovations are complete in the greenhouses. But in order to continue to move the process forward, the permitting and zoning approvals are obviously critical before we put a significant amount of money into the site. So we we're eager to move this forward. And last meeting, I believe we mentioned, we engaged a company called Byers Scientific to help us with this plan. And we actually brought Mark Byers, who's the founder and the president to the meeting tonight. Want him to give an introduction of himself and his company and experience. And then the board, we can open it up to questions. And again, I apologize for those who are on the planning board meeting. It may be similar, but we feel he did a great job at the planning board meeting. And thanks again, Mark, for for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for the opportunity. Do you like me to discuss?
I guess I'd open it up to the room. And would you like Mark to give an intro? Or would you like to ask questions? He can, or he can kind of go go into his spiel on how he would approach this and how we're going to work together on our order plan. It's your call.
Well, an introduction certainly would be appropriate as background is credentials and what he wants to tell us first before we ask questions.
Great.
Sure. Okay. Well, my name is Mark Byers. Last name is B Y E R S. I would suggest everyone visits our website buyers-scientific.com. I say that not as an advertisement, but because it's the most efficient way to really understand what the company does. You get a very quick introduction to our technology and and all the different markets that we work in. We are arguably probably the largest firm in the cannabis odor mitigation space in North America. We're fortunate to work with some of the largest producers in North America, both in Canada and in the United States. Companies like Canopy Growth, you may be aware of, a very large company. We do all the cannabis odor mitigation for them and in Canada, as well as their investment portfolio companies in the United States. And then as well as in Santa Barbara County, California, which you may or may not know, probably don't know, clear on the other side of the country, but it's the largest concentration of cannabis cultivation in the United States. Maybe even in in North America for that matter. So we have various types of technology we bring to bear depending on on the the nature of the grow. One of those technologies, I have a patent on on that technology. What else can I share with you? Well, significant, if you were to visit the website, you would see the company is really made of three divisions mitigation solutions. That's our equipment, our hardware. And then the second division of three is buyers emissions analysis. And I point that out because that is staffed and run by two of the nation's leading cannabis emissions experts. That's Dr. Will Deswete at UNC Chapel Hill and Dr. Alex Gunther at University of California Irvine. They're both teaching professors. Alex is a globally recognized air chemist. He built models that the EPA still uses while he was at BPA and NOAA. They're also employees of my firm as well as shareholders. And so I'm not going to spend a lot of time, your time on this, but we're 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 all in good hands, considering the depth and breadth of experience and ability we bring to the table. And I will position one last thing here for you all that I said on a previous meeting and and I I it's at the risk of sounding maybe a little disparaging to the permit that we're discussing here today. But if you were to compare the scale of this project to what we deal with on a on a daily basis, meaning we deal in square acres, not square feet. So this is a small project and and I wish them to become a large project, and I'm sure they'll get there. But suffice to say, this is, this is a highly accomplishable mission with with respect to the odor mitigation plan for this proposed site. So glad to take any questions.
So is there an actual plan, Mark, if I can call you Mark?
Please.
That's been reduced to writing?
That is in in progress right now. I think as we understand, you know, this happens pretty consistently, actually. Permit applicants will generally come to a board such as yourself and and it is a bit of a back and forth as you work together to really orchestrate. What is the best solution for all interested parties? And as, you know, it's kind of an iterative thing. And so as we understand the scope and scale, then we can adapt even more precisely how we want to attack that. So it would be premature to say at the moment, we have a, you know, a bona fide scripted out approach.
Let me ask you this without revealing any of the particulars. Has your firm been hired by these applicants?
Yes.
And when there'll be some assumptions built in, assuming we gave them their permit tonight and they had all their permits, which obviously we don't control them all. How soon would how soon would you have a plan for them?
Oh, I think when we when the applicant knows precisely the approach that they want to take, and that's partly, I think influenced by your direction. Turning that around is is very quick. Again, partly because of the the scope and scale of the project that, you know, there's we're not rebuilding anything here. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. So very quickly.
Yeah, just to add to that, I think as we as we formalize our, you know, renovation project, I think that's going to bring to light a lot of the things where Mark's going to step in and say, okay, because we're doing this, we're going to need this type of equipment to get to get that going. And, you know, I think we'd be foolish to spend that type of of capital investment prior to getting our approvals in place and permits. So that's kind of why we're saying it's going to work together. We're happy to move it forward however you see you see fit here. But that's kind of our, when we say it's it's kind of a fluid process, that's what we mean by that.
So when you say quick, Mark, so about six weeks, eight weeks or longer?
Ah, well. Yeah, I suppose, you know, you could use anywhere between eight and 10 weeks as a rule of thumb, you know, that that so you're in my terms, that's really speaking to how quickly is equipment manufactured for that particular installation. And that's a function of what is the equipment? You know? So it's a quick, it's really no different than the typical ordering of a piece of equipment. There's a a standard lead time for that industry. That's kind of where we are. I would say anecdotally, for anyone out there who's concerned about the economy, what we see in the manufacturing sector is there's a lot of demand for a lot of parts right now. Which is, you don't see that in in the news necessarily. You only see the unemployment rate, but I can tell you someone on the ground. Things are roaring right now. Which is a good thing. Obviously, it's a good thing. But, you know, that feeds into our analysis, you know, are we six to eight weeks or eight to 10 weeks?
So what is the standard that you've been asked to accomplish? In other words, do you measure the smell by parts per million, parts per billion? The X number of feet off of the premises that you'd have parts per billion reading? I'm only drawing on experience that we have as we approved Yankee candles in town at Waley. And so years ago, there was concern about the smell of the the wax and the fragrance they were putting into the candles. And they had experts come and they told us, you know, thousand feet away, you would or their machine would not be able to sense the odor. So it's a it's kind of a wide open question, but what have you been asked to accomplish?
Well, I I, you know, I I don't know if we've necessarily been asked to accomplish a particular thing other than what is pretty typical and standard. And it's the metric we would hold ourselves to. And that is, you know, certainly not detectable at the property line. Right? I would say, you know, looking at the nature of of what what we see as proposed. It's really well within reason to, you know, mitigate 80 to 90% of everything inside. And then, meaning within the grow space. And then it's very typical for us to then pick up the straggler, so to speak, and ambient air. And then by that metric, by the fence line, I mean, that's the standard we really have on every cultivation, quite frankly. And that's what's typical for nuisance odor, right? Irrespective of of what the emission source is.
All right. So that's good to hear. I know the other board members probably have some questions.
I just, I understand the complexity of spending a lot of money to get odor mitigated before you've got the permit. But it's also been concern of the butters and members of this board that odor be mitigated and done really, really well. So, you know, we're kind of caught in some sort of symbiotic relationship here. But I'm not sure at what point my comfort level grows regarding odor, only because, as I said before, and I will say again, we don't have on the ground experience in our town. Everybody promises that odor is going to be mitigated. Everybody promises that at the property line, you won't have any odor. But we don't know based on experience whether that's going to be true. So that's where I am.
And I think in response to that, I think it's appropriate to put the proper precautions or conditions in in your approval that, you know, ensures that we comply with with whatever the town sees as an appropriate, you know, measurement level. The planning board did refer to bringing in some type of outside individual to monitor the odor for a time period to make sure that we are complying with what we said we were going to do. Marx made it clear that, you know, if we don't technically follow exactly what he recommends, he doesn't really want anything to do with the project, you know, he's got, he holds himself to a pretty high standard. Certainly doesn't want a project of this size to ruin his reputation. And I think we we take it very seriously because we've been saying this for months now, you know, I I don't, no one really knows me in this meeting, but I'm I'm a man of my word. I try to keep my word. If I say I'm going to do something, I want to do it. And that's the type of project we want to run here. I don't have any interest in going back on our word after we've we've told the butters and told the neighbors a million times that we're going to do all we can do to to mitigate the odor. So but I don't, I don't think delaying is the answer because there's no proof or no project that's that's been in play yet. We're eager to go forward here. We're willing to spend quite a bit of money getting the site ready. And it's it's going to, you know, be a good project for the town from a revenue perspective. And we're we're confident we can get it done, especially with Mark's help. So.
I'd like to jump in just for one, one quick comment as well. Sort of answer Bob's question. I think it would help if he understood a little in a little more detail, some of the projects you've worked on in the past and the successes and measures of successes that you've had, no specific projects. In particular, the ones in similar climates to to what we have here. Perhaps you could just speak on that for a minute and that might answer some of Bob's questions.
Sure. Well, you know, we're we work in really a number of different climates, I guess. Near Niagara Falls, Niagara on the Lake in Canada, Mirabelle Quebec, British Columbia. British Columbia. That was a 40 acre cannabis cultivation. And in Santa Barbara County, you know, we have, we have receptors within a couple hundred feet, quite frankly. And less, I think, one of our projects, there's receptors probably 50 feet away. Yeah, you know, so the probably easier easier way to sort of characterize that is maybe describe the the technology and and why it's effective and and how we would use it. So we really you know, when it comes to odor mitigation, right, it 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 can be boiled down to some very pretty simple principles. Anything you can eliminate at the source, obviously, that's way easier than trying to deal with it once it becomes a fugitive airborne emission. Right? We can deal with that. But clearly, it's a question of angles. We'd rather deal with it in the greenhouse, for instance. So carbon scrubbing, as an example, you may have heard of carbon scrubbing. Carbon scrubbers are a big deal in the cannabis industry. We have taken that to an industrial scale. We have well, I would I'd add one pretty pivotal thing here. So our emissions analysis division recently and and there's a press release actually about to go out from Iowa State University. We were collaborators with Iowa State and researchers in Texas, and we have identified, really isolated and identified the prime odor causing compound in cannabis, the one that is literally responsible for the so called skunky smell. And it's not so called, actually, there's a reason. It really is related to skunk gland. It's a, it's a sulfur. That's a big deal for us because I think the analogy I used earlier is it's one thing to go to the doctor and say, you know, I have these symptoms and he issues, you know, or prescribed you a broad scale, or what they call it, a broad spectrum antibiotic. And it kind of does the job pretty good, but it'd be nice if you knew more particularly what you were aiming for. And that's what we were able to achieve in really the last few weeks, which is a culmination of about two years of research. So now we know very precisely what it is that we're looking for. So that informs our chemistry. And informs, really, this is more of a science and physics question, but the the carbon substrate that we use. We're now able to even measure more precisely what the adsorptive capacity is. I don't expect anyone here to be a physicist, but carbon or a chemist, but carbon relies on something called adsorption, has to do with polarity and and it traps molecules. Our most recent study or testing, I should say, we were removing 99.95% of the particular thial. So it's one thing to know you're grabbing a lot of something. It's even more powerful to know we're grabbing precisely what we're looking for, trapping it. But even more so being able to measure it because measuring thials is a challenge. Thials are detectable in parts per trillion. So embracing the proper use of, I will say, carbon is extremely misunderstood and misapplied technology in the cannabis space because too many growers back in the day will say, just sort of take for granted or take it face value, throw carbon up. But like many things, it's more to it than that. The substrate, the residence time of air through it, the matching of CFM, a number of things are happening here. We're specialists at this, and that's the fact. And we actually partner with one of the world's leading air filtration companies, which is CAMfil, C A M F I L. Encourage you to look it up, CAMfil, they're a Swedish company. And we exchange data now. My firm's findings are helping to inform even further that part of their practice cannabis, that is, which is miniscule, but nonetheless, it means something to them. So we already know before we start really what our removal efficiency is. That's why I was saying about dealing with carbon on the inside. And this is data we can, you know, we can share. The math, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but it's important that you walk away with a the confidence that we know what we're doing here and the data support it more importantly. So it's a pretty simple equation in reality that a cannabis emission or a cannabis canopy, no different than it could be a field of tulips. Okay? There is a gas phase emission rate from that field of tulips, right? And you could measure that. We do the same thing for cannabis. We can measure what its gas phase emission rate is. And what that means is, as you all know, you have a plant, conditions, meteorological conditions, heat, humidity, other things are are causing gases to boil off. That's what we experience when we smell roses and everything else. Right? So we're able to measure what that is. So then we know the rate that that emissions are coming off of it. Well, if we know we want to circulate air to capture all that, to really sequester, right? Well, then it's just simply a question of sizing, how many exchanges do you need versus what that emission rate is? Then it's algebra. It's not even algebra, really. It's division, right? And so we size the number of scrubbers that are necessary to get the proper number of exchanges such that we know we are exchanging air at a rate equal to or greater than that which the plant is emitting. So we know we're getting all of it, but then the analogy would be, well, what if you're passing it through a butterfly net? You may be circulating it the right amount of times, but what are you capturing? Right? Well, what we capture with is the most advanced carbon brought forth in the cannabis space that there is. And that is, I'll share with you, it's pretty interesting. So generally, carbon, when we talk about scrubbing relies on bitumenous coal. It's often pelletized. But and that substrate may have an affinity for a certain type of chemistry. When it comes to, we'll say the the chemistry of cannabis emissions, which are in particular, it's terpenes and thials. It's the thials, which are sulfors that we're really interested in. Charred activated coconut shell actually is is much more conducive to this thing that I said earlier, adsorption. If anyone's taking notes, this stuff gets thick, I get it. Go to Google afterwards, look up adsorption. Look up something called Vanderwall's forces. Look up the London effect. These are the things that we're dealing with. But this is our, this is our backstop of why we know that activated coconut shell charred has a higher adsorptive quality than other things. And so then we can, so now we know we've got the best magnet, so to speak, to grab it. We know what the rate is that we need to circulate to grab. And when I say circulate, right? Imagine, imagine your house, if you don't open any windows and you don't have any air conditioning system and you have a fan in there, you're just recirculating the same air, right? That's really no different than the air purifiers. There's taking that same air and cleaning it and putting it back into the space. Nothing really new there. That's effectively what we're doing. Difference is we're sequestering those things that we don't want to smell in the carbon. So now we know the rate, we know what we're looking for, we know how to grab it. And the last thing is we can measure it. We can go back and take measurements. And I happen to have one, and this is not a prop. I, this happens to be sitting on my table. Because I was just in New Jersey at one of our clients, I'm in Santa Barbara, and I was in New Jersey. Taking air samples. Those will go down to our lab at the University of California Irvine. And we'll pull samples, we'll pull off of those cartridges and see what the upstream and downstream differences are. And we already know what we'll see, what the removal is. So that part's important because when it comes back to you know, this metric, so the gentleman I spoke with that posed the first question, I apologize and get your name, but you know, you were asking, how is it measured? And, you know, we can't really, there is no yardstick for odor, unfortunately. Odor is a subjective thing, as you probably know, the EPA doesn't even publish standards, right? Because it's a nuisance. But the EPA doesn't care about nuisance. The EPA cares about danger. If it's a dangerous emission, we can measure it and there are metrics. When it comes to nuisance odor, it's much more difficult. But what we can do is sort of ascribe a level, a detection level to what we're actually experiencing. You had spoken in parts per million, billion, et cetera. So I'll tell you, thials are detectable in parts per trillion. They're very tricky to 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 sample, to grab and then see. And we are able to do that. So we'll likely, this is very typical of what we do. We'll craft the right plan that works for this particular grow. The math will sort of support what our removal efficiency is. But then we can come back, you know, really, it's it's really only a question as the as the cultivation starts to get into flower. But we can come back and take these samples and present what the data indicate, this is what the amount is in the air. And that's fairly easy to equate to an odor detection threshold. That is really, you know, the only other approach that is really well, I would say it's admissible in court is an odor panel where we can actually come in and take a grab sample of air, you know, handfuls of them, and actually goes to a panel of people who are trained sniffers. I could give you a bunch of detail about it, but they they, I mean, you know, if you believe a sommelier can distinguish between a number of different wines, it's the same set of sensories. These folks are, you know, they have to be able to detect certain gases at certain levels. They can't eat a number of different things when they have to do their work. But their findings are ironclad and they're ultimately the arbiter of, you know, is an odor complaint valid really? Because that's ultimately what we're aiming for, right? So.
Mark, on the planning board meeting you talked through, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was San Francisco, I believe you got, you have a few clients that was at San Francisco or some someplace that had residential very close to the facility, much closer than what we're up here. Is that correct? Did I hear that correct? And that was.
In Santa Barbara County, we have people very close. Sure.
So my point of bringing that was up was that they were able to mitigate that odor in a much tighter area with residential butters far closer than we're at here. But our, again, our goal is to have to the property line no odor. So hopefully that that clears it up for everybody here. But if you, if you guys have any more questions, we're happy to. I say I'm happy. I'm happy to have Mark answer on our behalf.
Neil or or Chris question? How exactly did the planning board make their ruling on on this odor point? Has it been?
I think they understood that we were going to be working together as during the renovation progress and they were going to put in some type of measurement after the fact, I think, once we're operational to determine if there's any odor. And correct me if I'm wrong, Sophia, do you recall anything specifically that they had?
So good evening, Chairperson Lipton. The planning board did offer approval on the petition based on what was presented both by Mark Byers on Byers Scientific and as well as the additional supplemental information that Neil had prepared that had also been provided to this board. All their concerns about odor were addressed and the testimony was was given at its face. So there wasn't anything additional. We are reviewing conditions with them, I think, at their. there wasn't anything additional. We are reviewing conditions with them, I think, at their next meeting. But there was no specific standard or additional documentation that needs to be provided with regards to odor. They were satisfied with the testimony at the hearing.
Thank you.
So I I hear you saying, okay, the the goal is to have no odor at the property line. That's a goal. What are your chances of achieving that goal or success rate? What is it?
From what I'm hearing.
Commit to 100% that there won't be no odor at the property line? Or is this a, what, 80/20 opportunity?
Leave that to Mark, honestly, I I'm not sure specifically. I think I think it'll be minimal, if any at all, but again, I'll leave it to Mark to, you know.
So you can't commit to no odor at the property line, is what you're saying?
I think I would like to, but I would, I need an expert like Mark to to confirm that. That's our goal. But again, I think, I think you brought this up last time, Mark. I think if we're going to do all we can, but I don't know specifically if it's going to be 1%. I can't, I can't quantify that personally. I don't know.
You know, the the challenge with that question, I certainly appreciate it, and we get that a lot. So there's a couple of things at hand. One is the reality in the physical world. I would challenge you to find me something that is 100%, 100% of the time. It doesn't exist. The other thing, though, even if we were 100%, 100% of the time, we have zero control over somebody imagining, deciding, thinking that they smelled something, whether it is a skunk hit on the road, a hidden agenda, a, you know, an imagination or a fact, right? We don't have any control over that. So what we would rely on is the science that rather than relying on, you know, complaints, for instance, as as the metric of success, we'd prefer to rely on data. Right? Testing. What do the results say? What do the results indicate is the removal efficiency, right? That's really the ultimate metric. Now, I guess to answer your question, do we feel, I I think it would be foolish for anyone to ever, you know, stand up on a box and say, yes, 100%, 100% of the time. That implies perfection at every step along the way. And that's why would anyone hold themselves or have to be held to that standard? A door can get opened, left open, a door could blow open. For an example, something can fall and break a greenhouse glass pane. And before it's able to be repaired, some odor gets out. There's a million things that can happen that could cause a faint and fleeting odor. So that is, you know, just an unachievable standard in reality, right? Can we hold ourselves to a standard that this will not be a nuisance property? By most reasonable metrics? Yes. Yeah. We understand, you know, as as Chris said earlier, or maybe it was Neil. You know, everyone understands that SOPs need to be followed, right? And we all have to be on the same sheet. And when that happens, we experience a tremendous amount of success. And we wouldn't be doing the amount of business that we do if it were otherwise.
And the filters would have to be changed on a certain schedule, would they not?
They do. Yeah, and we have technology for that. We, the filters, I would not call them filters, but the the canisters, there's a number of carbon canisters in each of the scrubbers. If that's the approach we take, which probably will be, we can take those out, we can take one out, we send it down to the lab in North Carolina. They do the butane life assessment that helps us understand how much of the carbon has been used. It's not a linear relationship, but we do this all the time. And we can start to build the metric of when the carbon is is reaching capacity. That's an easy one.
Well, from the board's perspective, I just was reviewing the criteria, and actually number five, which is of the standards, noise and odors, says no noise or marijuana or other odors shall be detectable to property line. So that's, that is the standard. What we're wrestling with is, I think Bob, reading your mind, is wrestling with. Okay, we have that there. You're going to be duty bound to try to achieve it. Do we ask for anything more to give us confidence going into this approval process that you're going to achieve it? If I can pose that as the question. Bob, what do you think?
Well, Chris, I want to thank you for bringing Mark tonight because while I like listening to the science and Mark, thank you very much because your presentation really helped me feel more comfortable. I don't know, Roger, if there's a some sort of condition that can be just placed in terms of of seeing some testing data X number of months out so that we can, you know, just just have a look at at how it's working. But again, Chris, thank you. I mean, this has gone a long way. I wasn't suggesting before delaying. All I was suggesting is that I'm kind of caught between a rock and a hard place because I'll be one of the guys that that approve marijuana growing all over Wheatley, and then all of a sudden, holy crap, none of this works. So I'm feeling a lot better and I appreciate it. Neil, you're shaking your head. I, yeah, I appreciate the presentation.
Good, thank you.
Well, I like, I like your idea, Bob, though, we can, why don't we stick with that? Some sort of time period. Whether it be three months, six months after they begin operation, that they produce a report. Now, we don't have enough. I don't, I don't have enough technical.
Language, yeah.
Language to say what goes into that report. So that becomes a little bit of a quandary.
Well, yeah, and I I think also that it would be important to take a look at early part of a growth cycle, then when it goes into bud, when it goes into blossom. And then slightly afterwards, I I I think, because it's the, you know, the time when it's ripest, that it's ripest. Just from my little growth experience here in Massachusetts.
Well, let me then, let me flip the switch here. Mark, if you were sitting in my position as a board member, what would you want to see? And what what frequency would you want to see in in terms of a report? That that showed the the laypeople on the board that that you guys were doing a good job?
Well, thank you. That's a, I've never been offered this opportunity.
There you go.
Yeah, well, you know, I think I would, I would, interestingly, you might accuse me of being, in this case, the wolf guarding the hen house, but I can see from both sides of the fence, I would craft that because I also I know what cultivators, what standard they're held to, really everywhere in North America. So what would be typical is first off, a highly defined complaints response SOP, right? That puts responsibility both on the cultivator as well as the complainant. Because odor complaints are an extremely valuable tool if they're not weaponized. The problem is, you know, they get weaponized too often. And and now you're forced to prove a negative. In reality, you know, if if people are honest about and and and, you know, where, when did they smell it? Where were they? What time was it? Just give us that data point. Don't, don't, you know, not a bunch of hyperbole, just fact base. If we start to see if if this is something we're seeing and there's consistency there, clearly, that's a super valuable tool. So complaints at that time, it, you know, it's it's just very typical, you know, in Santa Barbara County, for instance, every single odor abatement plan requires verbiage and SOP by the cultivator, what they're going to do, how they're going to respond, how quickly they're going to respond, what are their metrics going to be? You know, how quickly do they get back, et cetera? So that would be the first requirement is is on the cultivator to provide in their odor abatement plan, what is their complaints? Response SOP. At the same time, like I said, there's an onus of responsibility on on you all as well, board members, or at least whomever has or with whomever lies that responsibility because, like I said, it's unfair to you and it's unfair to the cultivator for the complaints system to be weaponized against them. The reality is the reality is this is a somewhat nascent industry. We all know that there are people who don't necessarily support it. Therefore, they end up with a very powerful tool at their disposal that is arguably not always used fairly. So there's that aspect. I would then, if I had the magic wand, knowing what I know about what we do, a nice thing about the, one of the mitigation efforts, when I was referring to the scrubbing, is that is highly measurable. And so you know, the metric would almost be, look, if all the SOPs are being followed, and by the way, we can prove a number of these things are occurring with our own technology. So every one of our systems leaves the shop with its own website, basically. So that means we can allow, if the cultivator agrees, we can allow every one of you access to the odor mitigation equipment on that site. Read only, we can't have you in there tinkering stuff, but you could go in and see that it's operating through a browser. You could pull down reports. And so then it starts to follow a pretty precise iteration. If we know for fact what the removal efficiency is of the carbon, we know for fact how many exchanges are necessary, given this volumetric measurement, let's say, what are numbers we can do off the top of our head? We have 3,600,000 cubic feet. And we know that we're moving 36,000 cubic feet per minute. We can do the math and we know precisely how many exchanges that is per hour. We can compare that to the gas phase emission rate and one plus one plus one has to equal three. You can't argue that. We take away that subjectivity. And so if we can demonstrate with data, the machine was running, the carbon is good. This is what it's running at. Then it follows that this has to be the removal rate. So then the belt and suspenders is that the cultivator is required then on a whatever basis. And of course, that would have to be, because I think it was Mr. Smith made the point. Certainly, early on in the veg stage, there is no odor. And it is a, you know, it's a bit of a geometric relationship as the canopy comes into full flower. So, you know, we can come in at week six, take sample measurements. We can come in at week 12, do the same thing. And then I like the idea, actually, of even after harvest, get back to baseline. There is a very data-driven set of metrics based on a quantitative start to begin with. And when I say a quantitative start, I mean, the the initial infrastructure is is not based on a wet finger in the air, but based on what the what the science and the chemistry and the physics instruct us.
I would, I would assume odor is going to vary, like everybody is saying, depending on the what stage in the growing cycle, the the plants are. And is it going to be? I guess we get into growing, is it everything going to grow at the same rate, the same time and be harvested all at the same time? Or is this going to be a continuous process where it's going to be harvested all the time? So the the opportunity for odor is going to be there all the time and not just during harvest, whenever that is. Harvest is going to be all the time, I would guess, right?
Yeah, I can take that question. Yeah. To answer your question, we will, we will have plants in the flowering stage of their growth at all times. There will be periods. Basically, I'm planning on having one house, one of the greenhouses, you know, be for flower, primarily one of the greenhouses be for veg and to sort of toggle between them. So we would have, you know, we would have one harvest every six weeks. And at the beginning of of each six period, six week period, or shortly after each harvest, the plants would be in very early flower, so there would be less. But they would still be in flower and and after a couple of weeks in flower, the plants produce the odor.
And Neil makes a a pretty important point there. So you have to make the distinction of the entire canopy in one, so this is pretty typical, right? For an outdoor grow, for instance, outdoor grows have basically one harvest a year. Sometimes they can get a second one. And so, of course, let's say that's measured and, you know, we can be, we we see 40 acre grows outdoor, right, out here. So clearly, that 40 acres can be in in veg, you know, nursery and then in veg and it's slowly growing and there's really no odor profile. And and yeah, of course, 40 acres at full flower is one set of conditions. But when you're in perpetual harvest, that implies that the the mass that is in flower is considerably reduced, right? It's, you know, I don't know what Neil's particular plan is going to be, but it's it's really analogous to crop rotation. Right? So as you're rotating right through the cycles, because, yeah, remember, it's it's pretty easily, now I'm speaking Neil's language here, but it's it's all mathematically derived. The plant has a growth cycle, you have X amount of square feet. You're driven to what portion of that's going to be in flower. That's a pretty standard growing operation. But the implication is that only a percentage of it is in full flower at one time. You're right, it's it's a much smaller amount. Obviously, that makes odor control a lot easier. Try doing 40 acres in full flower. That's a heavy lift.
Well, fortunately, we won't be anywhere, anywhere near that.
All right, so I guess let me move as I normally do. Are there any butters here who have any questions or comments?
I have a question. I do. A butter, Mark Sobolski, 13 LaSalle Drive. You've been, I don't know if you've been over there, Mark, but you know, obviously you're aware that the greenhouses are quite old, like, you know, probably, I think, in 80 years old or so, in need of repair. Is there anything there that you see that may be problematic? Or or do you have any experience with odor mitigation with sort of retrofitting older greeters, greenhouses?
Yeah, well, we've got, unfortunately, a lot of experience with that, with old retrofitted greenhouses. What I mean by unfortunately is that in a number of jurisdictions, it's pretty common for you, you, this is just a typical planning commission sort of constraint where you have a structure that exists and you have two choices. Retrofit it and live with what you have or tear it down, start new. But when you tear it down and start new, that often puts you in a different set of circumstances. Now it's a land use permit as opposed to some conditional use permit, right? And then the, that that causes more heartache. And so it 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 ends up, the lesser of two financial evils is to retrofit the existing house. And we're always kind of sympathetic to folks that end up in that position. So that said, that forces us into often dealing with retrofitted greenhouse. So that said, that forces us into often dealing with retrofitted greenhouses. A nice thing about greenhouses is, let's be honest, at the end of the day, these are not superstructures designed by Frank Lloyd Wright, you know? They have stable skeletons, you pull off the dynaglass, put on fresh dynaglass, they're pretty easy to, to seal right back up if the, if the structure is solid. So it's not a heavy lift necessarily to refurbish. These are of a size, you know, I don't even think it's a significant financial lift to refurbish these things, right? They're, they're not that big. So that's, um, I, I mean, I, I think as, as Chris said earlier, um, you know, we, we wouldn't really probably even want to take on the project if we didn't understand that these things are gonna be um put in place, right? We can't have a leaky greenhouse, because, um, besides the cultivator getting fingers pointed at him, then we're gonna get fingers pointed at, at us, and I don't want that. So I know from our side of the table, so to speak, with, with, with Chris and the team, we're all on the same sheet of music there.
Uh, I just may interject also, our renovations, we plan on fully renovating these, so they will basically be brand new greenhouses once they're renovated.
And, and just a, just a follow-up comment, um, you know, and I, you know, certainly buyers, you know, Mark, very credible, you know, a lot of experience in the industry. Um, but I gotta be honest, as an Abutter, I, I, there is a certain, a certain, a sort of aspect of this, I'm uncomfortable with sort of an approval without seeing a odor mitigation plan. I know there are financial aspects involved, I'm just speaking from my perspective, as an Abutter, my parents, and, and, you know, as the folks who will be living over there, with something, and, you know, Chris certainly said, "You're a man of your word," and, um, but again, there's, there's an aspect of that that just, you know, is, is a bit uncomfortable for me.
Oh, yeah, I certainly understand that. I guess, the way I would address that question or statement is, um, you know, uh, just man to man, if I drew up the plan and showed it to you, I don't think it would necessarily mean a lot to you anyway, right? I mean, you wouldn't necessarily be able to put the value on what we're doing. Um, you know, when it, it's impossible right now to say what is the precise best approach, because we don't know precisely what the layout is gonna be. When we know, and, and I think that is a function of these folks getting the green light, when they know they're able to move forward, then they can start to craft out, okay, this is what the physical structure is gonna look like. At that point, I can really easily sit down with you, whomever, as they put their plan together and show, okay, so these are the volumes we're dealing with. That's really the main thing, these are the volumes we're dealing with, this is the type of um ventilation that we're going to have. Then we can say, okay, all right, we're gonna use an atomization system on this, we're gonna use this particular neutralizer in this volume, we're going to be exchanging. At that point, um, this goes back to what I was saying a minute ago. It, you know, not to dumb it down, it really honestly turns into simple math at that point. It's math based on a lot of findings that we have, right? We're solving to, to answers that we, we know, right? We know what the removal efficiency needs to be, right? With the number of exchanges. So now, once we know what the volumes are, we can put the right number in place. Um, if that helps you, but, um, I guess, uh, the, the one thing I would sort of leave with you, I, I don't, yeah, you know what, I guess if you do look at our website, by the way, um, you can see some of the scale that we work on. And I, I mean, it's hard for me to convey this to you, but this is a little project. This is really easily handled. It, it's just not, you know, it's not a big project. Um, and I hope it, I hope it grows, of course. You should all hope, they're gonna remit tax dollars back to your area, right? It, it, it's, it can be a very virtuous cycle. Um, but starting off, and then it's probably, you know, I suppose, um, now I'm sort of editorializing on your time, but, um, it, it's a good opportunity for you to see a smaller scale, but it in fact can be, can be handled very well, and scaling is pretty easy, right? It, it, it really is, it's, it's, it's a scale, so.
Other questions, Mr. Sobolski?
No. Thank you.
Any other Butters present?
Yes, I'd just like to say, I am Mark's sister, and I just want to reiterate what I expressed to the committee, the board last week, is that as a Butters, we have no agendas, we are not weaponizers. Um, we're simply a Butters, I like to think of integrity, who just want what's best for the neighborhood. When I say the neighborhood, I mean everyone, I mean the LaSelles and the future of any businesses that come into the area. And I really appreciate the questions and thoroughness of this board and the follow-up of Cana Select um, in terms of addressing those concerns. So I just want to, to leave in at that, that we are not folk, my parents are not folk, that would um falsely claim anything that they did not detect and were not anticipating if this were to happen, and with this efficacy, hopeful if this is to occur, that it would happen. So I just want to air out that we have, we have no offenses or anything, that we're just here for the, the best of everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, that's refreshing to hear, to be honest.
It's just being human.
Okay, so if there are no other Butters, um, then from my perspective, it's a well-thought-out application. I'm glad we had the opportunity to view the premises the other day. The difficulty if we were to approve the project uh, tonight is putting the condition in place and, and writing up the condition that would deal with the future odor abatement plan, and that's assuming, and I'm only one member and I'm not voting yet, that's assuming that we don't require an odor abatement plan prior to granting the application. But I think we can, we can have a level of protection, knowing that, that point five that I mentioned does already hold them to a standard. No odors allowed beyond the perimeter. And then if we, um, perhaps consult some other, um, projects that have had written odor abatement conditions, and craft some of those ideas along with Mark Byers' suggestions, uh, that we can come up with something that might satisfy all the concerns here. So those are my initial thoughts prior to voting. What do you think? Oh, we should decide, actually, I should say this. Bob will be voting as a regular member. Between Kristen and Fred, who wants to vote as the third voting member?
I will defer to Kristen, since she's, uh, in charge of the presentation here, this Zoom meeting, so I'll let her do that.
All right, Kristen, Kristen, you're nominated.
Okay, I'm voting.
All right, so that's my initial, uh, um, suggestion, which is really opening it up to the board. Um, Bob, I know you've got a lot of thoughts on this topic, what do you think?
Well, I, I think that tonight has, for me, uh, gone a long way. Uh, and I understand the, uh, the complexity of, of, uh, investing that kind of money into buyer scientific equipment um, and a plan before you know if you're going to be able to actually do it, but we've heard from a Butters, um, I'm very happy that, um, the LaSalle family has given a tremendous amount to our town, and I'm very happy that it's sort of the, it, the heart of the LaSalle operation is going to exist, although in a, in a modified form, as we move into the middle of the 21st century. Um, I'm glad it's still gonna remain a, a farm, although I guess Massachusetts doesn't call this farming and agriculture. So there are many parts about this that, um, I think are gonna work, uh, to the town's advantage and to sort of the history of the town, which is important. I really liked tonight's presentation a lot. I just don't know how we get to figuring out, as you said, Roger, figuring out a order of, of, um, you know, stipulated conditions, um, without maybe looking at some other places that had them, to give us an idea of what to do, but I do like the idea that, um, Mark gave us about a complaints response, um, operating procedure kind of thing, and putting the onus on Cana Select to, um, draw up that SOP for us, um, in part. So, um, I mean, I, I, I think I'm in a good place about voting, as long as we can figure out a way to deal with those conditions.
Now, do we have any other conditions besides the one dealing with odor? As we went through this last week, they did a good job of, you know, going through all the bullet points and satisfying me, I'll say that.
Well, I mean, is it, is it unreasonable to, um, the odor mitigation is all, uh, buyer scientific, uh, if, if they were unable to do buyer scientific, does that affect how we feel about odor mitigation possibilities?
Well, that's a good point. We could make a condition that the applicant continue to work with buyer scientific and come up with a scientifically, um, appropriate and industry typical solution. I mean, the words may not be those exact words, but, uh, and then that puts the onus on them, if for some reason they can't strike a deal with buyer scientific, they would have to let us know, and seek to amend their, their permit. So if we've gotten at least a comfort level, an initial comfort level with Mark Byer and buyer scientific, we've at least made a significant step.
I, if I could make a suggestion?
Yep.
Um, just, um, with all due respect, as an observer in a, a number of these similar situations, um, now you could say, "You're shooting yourself in the foot, Mark." Um, I, I, I would suggest you avoid, um, citing a particular company as a requirement, because I would assume that your constituency would have cause to say, "You cannot endorse a particular company." I would love it, but I don't think that's a legal framework you wanna maybe put yourself in. What would be more typical is to say that the permit applicant is required to employ BAT, Best Available Technology. How is BAT, um, you know, uh, quantified or qualified? An example would be, well, what is considered best available technology and other similar markets? By that mechanism, I can demonstrate, we are in fact best available technology in one of the largest cannabis markets in North America. I think that gives you, now I'm playing legal counsel to you, and I'm not an attorney, but I think that puts you actually in a more tenable situation down the road. And also provides the applicant the opportunity to, look, if someone comes along with better technology than ours, um, then the permit applicant should have the, the flexibility and, and the ability to, to go that route if I haven't already purchased it. No, kidding.
Good.
Good point.
Just another comment.
Roger, I think in our, in our last meeting, I remember Bob and I were making the, the comments that we'd like to see some examples of how odor was being mitigated in our, in our state or in this Connecticut River Valley. We wanted to see something local that was being, uh, a marijuana establishment that had odor and how it was being mitigated. What Mark is, Byers is saying, yeah, that's true for California and other parts that I didn't hear anywhere near, near Massachusetts or in our, in our, in our valley here. And we asked for examples of that. I don't recall unless you guys on the board have seen more than I have, to get any information on that.
I do provide some.
I, I think this is a board, a board question for now, I, 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 I guess. Bob, have you seen anything more?
No, no. But I also, I mean, I also think, Fred, that, um, you know, the, putting in the, um, as Mark suggested, the best available technology, I don't know if we're gonna do better than that. If, I mean, best available technology means exactly that.
Right.
So.
And if this gives the board any other.
Wouldn't you think somebody else has this in our area, and they could tell us how they're controlling odor? I mean, we're not the only one dealing with, with marijuana establishments in this area in all of New England, right?
I think you could go to a number of different locations around you guys, and we brought this up at the planning board, but uh, grew up in the, the Lenox, Lee, Pittsfield area, Great Barrington, have very successful uh cultivation and retail locations, and they've had success with this, so there's, there's, there's precedent out there that shows that, that this is doable. Um, and in, in addition to that, when, I can't even tell you what the process is going through the CCC to get a license is going to be very, very involved, and if we don't have everything in a row and the proper SOPs and odor plan, security plan, all that, we're not even gonna get up and running. So there could be something put in place in he- here um, that ties in with that to our provisional license or something like that, but again, I, I don't think the answer that is the best for the town is to delay this project any further, I think, give us a chance to, uh, to do the right thing here and get our project up and running, and if we don't follow, uh, the protocol, you have the ability to, you should have the ability to, to prevent us from continuing operation. I think that's the best recourse you have, is to come in and say, "You're not following the rules," and, and therefore, we have to shut you down until you prove, prove otherwise. Um, in addition, we could have a, um, odor mitigation plan presented to you prior to commencing operations, that could be another option here, but again, I don't, um, I don't see the need to delay this further personally, but again, that's not my decision, but I just wanted to bring those couple of points up as well.
Well, I like the idea of the odor mitigation plan being presented prior to operation. To address Mark Byers' point, though, um, I don't see it as an actual problem, and, and we're certainly not endorsing his company, but he, they've presented him as, I'll call him an expert witness. I think the board has been, has been impressed by him. I don't think it's a leap of faith to say they're probably gonna hire him. Um, we're relying on what he told us, ipso facto. We, we should be able to continue to rely on what he said, and that, that odor abatement plan is gonna be prepared by him. Now, if, if they can't strike a deal with him, that's, that happens in the business world, I understand it. They just come back to us and we'll have to, have to address it, but at this point, he's the best we know of um, in terms of this project. We don't know if anyone else has looked at it that closely. I think that protects the board and the town. That's my personal view. So, the takeaway there is two things. An odor abatement plan prior to the commencement of operation ended to be prepared by, and we'll give you and say, Mark Byers or, or someone of similar, uh, stature, I know, that's kind of a. stature. That's kind of a loose, a loose charm.
Industry standing.
Yeah, but I, I just think
You prepare the plan, but I think Mark will assist us with. It has to be our plan. Mark's probably just going to say that, but
Yeah, well, if I could make a suggestion, again, it's this is probably a good opportunity for your town, township, county, whatever, to begin to start to set up what would be the typical proper protocol. Don't reinvent the wheel, right? Notwithstanding what Chris mentioned about other successful operations, the reality is cannabis is far, far behind in New England versus out West. So it's hard to find, you know, examples because not too many folks have gotten a permit. So we see this over and over. Learn, if I can humbly suggest, don't reinvent the wheel and learn what other municipalities have already been through. For example, you should require, I would suggest, that all applicants, not just this, that all applicants, their odor abatement plan is signed off on by a third party, either PE, right, professional engineer or certified industrial hygienist. That is becoming an industry standard across North America as an example. Then that gives the permit holder as well as the, the town sort of, you know, cover that a third party unbiased arbiter has looked at the engineering and all the other things and says, yes, we, we agree. And it's they that are actually putting themselves at risk then before they're willing to stamp something.
I like that. Big idea.
Excuse me, Mark, what were the two titles you just gave for who should do this as a third party?
It's typical, what we, a PE.
Okay.
Professional engineer. Over and over a C I H, a certified industrial hygienist.
Industrial, okay.
Yeah, I tend to put less emphasis on that. Just because of the space that C I Hs tend to, you know, a PE is way more qualified. But that is, you know, if you're in an area that you expect that this is going to continue to grow, then this is the sort of protocol would be typical to, to build out. It, it's a, it's a risk management tool for both the permit holder and for you on the county side. Or the, you know.
Townside, yeah. Okay, that's good. So it's eight thirty. We have another hearing after this one. So without further ado, why don't I do this, which is what I typically do? We're going to, I make a motion to close the public dialogue portion of the meeting. And that we, the board members will continue to negotiate right here on Zoom in public. So that's my motion.
Second.
Okay. So then unless we ask a specific question, all the other butters and the applicants and, and their, their allies will just listen. Okay, so I am prepared to vote in favor of the application tonight. I am in favor of granting it with a condition that there be an odor abatement plan submitted prior to the commencement of operations using best available technology, that it be signed off by an independent third party, either professional engineer or C I H certified independent hygienist. And that we will take some time to write that out with a little more specificity, but those would be the, the the highlights of what we would be approving. And if, because without saying that they have to meet the standards that are set in the bylaw, which is the point five, we don't really have to restate that because it's already there. So that's, that's what I would be prepared to do. And again, for everybody's purposes, for everybody's knowledge, this requires three votes unanimous in, in the same direction.
So Roger, we've just got one condition that we're voting on.
That's my proposal, yes.
That right, okay.
What about the complaints, response, operating procedure?
That should be part of it. Part of their standard operating procedure. And again, this is where the words will be important, but that there'd be, based on my notes, what Mark was saying. Defined complaint response SOP indicating where, when and what time the odor escape was, was note of, was noticed and that the SOP deal with how to respond to that.
Now, do we want to say that in the development of the odor mitigation plan, best available technology should be employed?
Definitely.
Okay, okay. With that, with that that we've just outlined, I would be prepared to vote tonight as well.
And I also will vote yes, based on those set of circumstances. So it's a yes for me too.
All right. So those were, I was thinking out loud. So now we'll make, I'll make a formal vote. So I will cast my vote, roll call vote is what's required under Zoom. Roger votes in favor.
Robert Smith votes in favor.
Kristen Vivon votes in favor too.
Okay, folks. So that's it. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We'll take some time to write this up, but it won't be, you know, it won't be more than a month, I'm sure. But, you know, we have spatial distancing rule, everything else to deal with. So we'll get to work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, all.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Stay safe. So the board will stay where, where we are. Is, is Tony present?
I just.
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, Tony.
Hello, everyone. Good evening.
Hello.
Well, we can, we can get started unless, unless people need more time. Tony, we got your submission, which is a revised plan. So is this, is this still a work in progress or is this the plan you want us to consider?
Well, first of all, I'd like to apologize for missing last meeting. I got messed up on the date somehow and failed to get on. So I want to thank the board for continuing that, the hearing on our behalf. This, I think from your standpoint, it's, it's a decision that I think we could make this evening. If you recall, when we submitted the last time, we had two flag lots. And in the time between that and the meeting that I missed, we got a response from the town council that in, you know, statutory construction of the bylaw would state that there could only be one flag lot on a, on a parent parcel regardless of the size. So even though we have a ninety one point three acre parcel here, the bylaws that's currently constructed only allows one flag lot. So with that determination, if you recall, we had two flag lots and a frontage lot. Essentially what we have done is remove the frontage lot, keep lot one as a, as a flag lot and make lot two a normal in our frontage lot. And, and it just increases the size of the open space conservation lot or remaining area. So for a small project, it's been very, it's, it's quite difficult. There's a lot of parts and mostly where we've been working with the natural heritage folks, this whole lot or over ninety percent of the lot is within natural habitat area. So you'll see on this plan, I don't know if you can bring it up, Roger, but I'll try to describe this. This is considerably different from the first plan that we submitted. So lot one would be the flag lot. Lot two is a normal frontage lot with frontage and area. This is aquifer protection. So they have to be over three acres in size, which they meet. Good portion of the lot to the north that fronts on Dickinson is all pond and wetland area. That's that shaded area. So in our conversations with natural heritage, to be able to develop the two residential lots, which would still be served by a common drive, that has not changed. Because that it's the least impactful way of accessing both lots with the wetlands that we have that cut across almost all of it. There is a little farm, you know, upland area that, that was created there years ago. So in order to create these two flag lots and leave them open for development, we have to do what's natural heritage is requiring is a three to one mitigation. So you'll see out back of those two residential lots, you'll see a natural heritage conservation restriction of a twenty seven point four two acres that that would start out as a development restriction. Usually with those things, there's some signing and monumentation so that that open space lot, which will never be developed, will be also have that restriction on it. So there's been a lot of discussions with them, the wetlands folks. So essentially we've been continuing our, our local to try to get them on. And I think we're now at the point where we can get back to the local approval zoning, planning board and conservation to get this plan approved. So we still will have some negotiations with natural heritage. I do need to get a conservation management permit. But we're pretty settled on the area. And so we would really appreciate it if the board would consider the one flag lot, which meets the requirements of the town bylaw as a special permit approval this evening. If you're uncomfortable and want to wait a little while for the state permits, we would ask for a continuance, but if they change something, we would have to come back to the board. I don't see that, that flag lot being changed in any, any shape or form. So I, I think we're good to go on those.
I don't know if, might have been unintentional. Your little flag there that says wetland conservation restriction.
Yes.
It blocks the, the, the distance of the frontage.
Oh, yeah. I, I think, you know, I'm going to ask Mark to chime in on this. He's on. He probably recalls what that is. It's over the forty feet. That's the minimum requirement for flag lot. Mark, do you know what that number is? Can you, can you pick that up?
Looking it up right now.
Now, there's a lot going on there. We've got a wetland restriction and, and we're supplying a forty foot access and utility easement along the common drive, which will be utilized by both lot one and two. There's a maintenance agreement. Those are all planning board issues, but we've supplied the planning board with a maintenance and a covenant for maintenance agreement for that common drive.
And while he's looking that up, so is that the proposed location of the house that I see, the, the rectangle?
They're just depicted. We're not, we haven't locked that down. So individual homeowner that buys that lot, the way we have this set up is we give them the ability to construct within zoning, obviously they can't get in a setback, but they can be anywhere in that lot. If we were to restrict the position of the house in the grading, so say we were to restrict it to one acre out of that lot, then we could definitely reduce the amount of restriction, but we're trying to keep it open so that, say they want to move it a little farther to the north or something longer, they're not violating setback requirements, they would be able to do that. They'll have to come back for a building permit and so forth. For some reason, if on lot two, they push the building within a hundred foot buffer, they would have to go back to conservation to get that. As we're doing here, we're just, we're fixing those lot lines for frontage and area, but not trying to restrict where the house is built. I mean, the, the, we do have at the edge of the wood line on both of those lots, we've done test pits and and park tests, which were passed so that we have a good idea where the, you know, where the septic systems would go. Those could be changed too, if they wanted to redo it all, but I don't see the why you would want to do that because they're downhill and those systems could be gravity, gravity systems, which make a lot of sense. You got anything, Mark?
It should be approximately forty six point six five feet, but I just want to confirm that.
We'll be going to the, to the planning board with an A and R to get that approved. Both of those lots, but I think it'd be better to have the special permit from, from, from the Z B A before we brought that planning board in our plan.
At this point, K on page forty one, that should be maintained or kept naturally occurring or planted vegetated buffer zone between any flag lot and any front lot. Sufficient to provide privacy between the two lots.
I'm sorry, didn't catch that, Roger.
Yeah, K on page forty one. Vegetated buffer zone between the two lots.
Yep.
What do you got between those lots, trees or, or anything?
Well, they're all wooded right now. So the, Mark, what's the side yard setback on these? Do you have that handy? On the, I don't have the construction plans. I think they're twenty, twenty, are they twenty foot side yards? So essentially you'd have forty foot between, you know, building setback areas. So that creates a buffer between the two lots.
Well, it says a vegetated buffer. You're saying forty
It's all tree.
With the tree. Okay, got it.
It's all tree. That's all wooded. It's open where the wetlands are. That's open meadow there. That's been tayed, I believe, for years. It still was an open meadow when we did our test pits and all of that. So with the side yard setbacks of twenty foot, I mean, so you'd have a forty foot buffer between the buildings there. I wouldn't think people are going to cut the whole lot. You know, they would probably keep some privacy there, but that would be in the development of the lots.
And you're saying the, the A and R plan is middle show about forty?
Yeah, it's greater than the, we never, I mean, we, we've got so much flexibility, we would never bring it right down to the, the minimum just because things don't quite get built the way they're. We're trying to run that lot line essentially down the middle of the, of the common drive. And then we've got forty foot wide access and utility easement over the top of it that both of those lots share.
Okay, is Bruce too available?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Can.
So, so, yeah, so this is the first time I've seen this new plan. So there's no the, the, the lot that's, that was originally on Masterson Road in the corner of Dickinson Hill and Masterson, that five acre lot is, is no longer.
No.
You, you just decided to put two lots up, up in the woods.
Well, the other area, we could have put it right at the frontage, but the area back provides for more room because of the encumbrance of the wetlands that, you know, are pretty much right off the frontage of Masterson and Dickerson. So from an environmental standpoint, it's much, it's much better to put it back there.
Well, it's much better for you. It's not much better for the neighbors. I can tell you that. Now, I have a serious potential health concern that you probably have not considered and nobody's considered. But it has to do with wood smoke. When the candidate is built next to me, the first call season, they have a, they, they burn wood. The draft, the, the way the air current drafts, it drafts, they couldn't blow the smoke into my house any better than if, if they tried. It just drafts right down in this direction. Now, Todd Sanford, Sanford up on Dickinson Hill has a wood burning furnace. And that drafts down to us too. He's far enough away. It's not a problem. Now the candidate is It's not a problem. Now, the candidates were kind enough when I pointed it out to him. I mean, the smoke was at my back door. It was like it was like fog. It was like London fog. So they were kind enough to not burn wood whenever the weather was allowed windows opening. And I've not had a problem with them because they only burn wood in the winter when the house is shut, and that's fine. But Todd has a wood wood burning furnace. And I know Whately allows wood burning furnaces, at least I think they do. If one of these people that or whoever buys one of these lots decides to put a wood burning furnace in, our houses are going to become uninhabitable. And I'm not blowing smoke. No pun intended. That smoke is going to pour down and basically suffocate Ingrid and myself, and maybe even some of the other neighbors. And I I fear for this because this town doesn't seem to be able to enforce their zoning requirements very well. Ie across the road, a ham radio antenna is actually a cell tower. After it was put in, the building inspector said, yeah, I probably shouldn't approve that one. Ie, the Camosas Construction Company at the end of this road, a commercial operation which shouldn't be there. However, it's there and nobody's doing anything about it. So I don't know who's going to buy these lots or what they're going to put on them. But I want it on record that a wood burning furnace should be prohibited because it will be a serious health hazard, not to mention forget what it's going to do to the value of the properties in the areas. Nobody's going to want to buy a house that it can't breathe the air. So that's what I have to say about that.
Can I just respond for one second?
Yeah.
Bruce, I just want you to to know that it is your absolute right at any time to contact the building inspector, who is the person that enforces zoning by law. The zoning board of appeals interprets bylaws, but is not an enforcement agency. So I take correct, we're not an enforcement agency in any way, shape or form.
Yes, I know.
If there's a violation, according to you, you are welcome at any time to contact the billing inspector and have him make a finding. I just want to make that clear.
Okay, I appreciate that, Bob. He has, and I'm not, I'm not asking the zoning board to enforce prior construction projects. By the way, he's been contacted multiple times. But I just want to, before before a problem becomes a reality, I want to try to avoid that. And I was hoping that there could be some stipulation prior to approving this project. I wanted to make you guys aware of this potential situation because we don't know who's going to buy these or what they're going to do with it. Because it seems that there's, you know, people can whatever they want, even though it's 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 zoned for residential. And as I say, Todd has a wood burning furnace, but it's far enough away that it's, you know, he's he's back in there. He doesn't have immediate neighbors. So it's far enough away. It doesn't, it doesn't affect anybody, but these houses will definitely affect Ingrid, myself, and probably the people across the street. And I would just I would like to, I would like to be on record saying that there should be a prohibition against a wood burning furnace either of those two places. Wood stove, not going to tell somebody they can't have a wood stove, but a wood burning furnace is usually a year round. You know, people use those things year round. They heat their hot water with them. And that, and we will smell that and it will ruin our air.
Do, does Whately, so Whately allows wood burning furnaces currently?
Far as I can tell.
I've never come across the issue in town of Whately. I actually had a case as a lawyer. See if I can get these facts straight. I represented the Conway Board of Health trying to shut down a wood burning furnace. This was about eight or 10 years ago. That was just over the Conway line in Ashfield. But the smoke was coming into Conway. And so it was a jurisdictional question. It went to the housing court. But but they had a whole set of Conway did, had a whole set of rules and regulations dealing with these furnaces. I ain't never seen any of those in Whately, to tell you the truth.
I think Whately has some rules and regulations regarding wood burning furnaces, but I'm sure they're allowed. Because there's one, like I said, Todd has one, and there's one down on off road too, I believe.
Well, then maybe it's a board of health regulation.
Well, there are regulations, but what I'm saying is that it, you know, people seem to be able to buy their lot, buy, build, have their house, and then just pull whatever the heck they want up there. And then after it's done, people seem to say, oh, geez, probably shouldn't have let that happen.
So the the problem that we have, though, and I I'm sympathetic to the smell of wood smoke and and I know that it does bother people. For the record, we don't even have a wood stove anymore, but that's besides the point. We don't have any power in a in a flag lot application to restrict anything about a future structure. Size, color, location. It's, it's really it is a health issue, and if it's a health issue, it would go to the board of health. It sounds like a bureaucrat, but but it's really outside of our our jurisdiction, and it's certainly nothing we've ever done. So but just to follow through on it. I know you told us last time with this newly configured plan. Where's your house, Bruce, in relation to, let's say, Lot 1, is it?
I'm immediately next door to Ingrid Kennedy.
He's two lots to the south, like Masterson.
Two lots to the south. Okay, got it.
Well, the second lot to the south.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you own a lot across the street too, don't you, Mr.? I think you own a lot across the street. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's an investment.
Yeah.
Roger, as from a legal standpoint, can the the deed for these two parcels, whenever they're sold, can there be a deed restriction on that? On the parcel that there should be no wood burning stoves? Can that be a condition of the deed?
I don't see it as within our power.
No, it's not.
The owner, the owner who's selling it can put a condition in a deed if the buyer agrees to accept it, but that's really a whole nother.
Yeah, I'm not asking for no wood burning stoves because, you know, that's going a little too far. But a wood burning furnace is a year round. They use them year round. So, like I say, they heat hot water with them. So so that smoke's coming in, you know, so you're going to be outside and you're going to be sucking their smoke into your lungs. Because because of the way the thing drafts, if the if the air drafted straight up and gone, I wouldn't have a problem, but it comes right down here.
I would consult the board of health and then even look online, see if they have any regulations about it, but to answer Fred's question, it's not within our power. It's just not. Because otherwise, we can do all sorts of things of dictating future development. What we're dealing with is size of a lot and whether it's allowed in a zone. And that's that's pure zoning board territory. Planning board gets into other things like, you know, how does it look? What kind of trees and shrubs you got to have? Driveway control, that's that's more in the field of planning. I don't know if they'd have any more.
Typically, it's not very restrictive for a single family home. And all these buyers are going to want to do is they're going to be allowed to do what's allowed in the zoning by law for the town of Whately and a residential lot. I mean, that's a residential designation and single family homes are by right. I mean, they can't do things that violate the zoning code. Or building code, the board of health.
Accurate statement. So you know, here, in this case, what we've done and without, you know, sort of in favor of one side or the other, but what we've done is with the town council, it seemed like there was too many lots there. Town council agreed. So we've successfully reduced by, what's the math? 50% the number of lots that they're going to develop? 33%, I guess. But anyway, we reduced by one the number of lots. So we've done our our job to that extent. Otherwise, if they've met the frontage requirements, the dimensional requirements, our hands are really tied. We can't predict the future. And there are nuisance laws too, even if they weren't a board of health. Someone's doing something on their lot. It's preventing you from living on your property. I mean, you could frankly sue them in court, but that's, you know, always a crap shoot when you win the case, but it's really in this particular instance, there's a plan. It seems to meet the requirements. It does meet the requirements. It's comply with what the town council said. You know, I like, I like Bruce. I don't want to do anything against him, but I would vote in favor of this. Meets the requirements of the flag lot by law. And so, Bob, and Fred, a question, you going to vote on this one?
I mean, I don't, I don't have any other questions. I feel bad for Bruce and for the abutters. But they did come back with the with the plan altered according to what I always thought was the interpretation of only being allowed one flag lot. And a lot of things are happening on that mountain that make me sad. But I think that I I could vote on this tonight.
My turn?
Well, I guess I'd I'd vote in favor because it does it meets the flag lot requirement now.
So Kristen or Fred, who's going to vote on this one?
Fred.
Fred, you want to take it?
Okay, sure. Yeah, yeah, I would agree that it does meet the flag lot requirements. And I guess I'd vote in favor of it, support it.
All right. So then that was our preliminary assessment. I'll make the make it formal then at this point. I'll make a motion to close the public dialogue portion of the meeting. All right. And then I'll proceed to cast my vote. I vote in favor of the plan that's been submitted. Got a date on this plan, Tony?
Yeah, it should be down in the right hand corner. It's December 1st, 2020.
All right. So I vote in favor of the December 1st, 2020 proposed plan is allowing one flag lot in addition to the A and R lot.
Roger, should there be any stipulation? Tony's still waiting for some approval.
Um, yes, numerous approvals, actually.
Numerous approvals.
Yeah, so we would have to come back if there's a change to the flag lot. And I'm okay with a condition that states that, Bob.
Yeah, I would like to include that as an order of condition that that they get all of those approvals. And don't make, don't make any changes to the December 1st plan.
Okay, sure.
No, well, what? Yes, in that case.
Should I just be listing for the record that to include all remaining state approvals, or do I need to list individual ones?
I would just, I would suggest that if the dimensional criteria of the flag lot changes, that we would be required to come back before the board to discuss those changes. I think it's pretty set, but we're dealing with a state, so anything can happen.
Well, I kind of need to hear from the ZBA about what's supposed to what what they want for for the condition to say.
Right.
Well, I mean,
Well, if if any, if any of the state approvals change the, as Tony said, change the dimensional aspects of the flag lot, then they've got to come back.
If any state approvals change the dimensional aspects of the of the plan dated December 1st, 2020.
If that's okay with you guys.
Yes.
Yeah, fine.
All right. So I cast my vote in favor of the December 1st, 2020 proposed plan on the condition that the dimensions don't change based on any changing state approvals.
I cast my vote yes.
I'll cast my vote yes.
Okay, that's it. We'll we'll draft it up and it's the end of this hearing. I understand there's another matter, but I'm recused from that particular.
Excuse me for a moment, just to wind up on this. If there were any state approvals that changed the dimensional aspects of this plan, the would have to return to which entity? Was it a commission?
The zoning board.
Oh, the zoning board. Okay, yep.
Yep.
Thank you. That's, I'm done with that.
Okay.
Thank you all. I thank you for your patience on this project. And have a wonderful weekend. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Okay, thanks, Tom.
Good night.
All right, I'm going to sign off. Bob's going to be the chair for the informal presentation that I understand is next, so I'll I'll be in touch with the board members in terms of drafting and signing the the three decisions that we made tonight.
Good evening. You, your microphone is muted. Mr. Herbert? Your microphone is muted.
Yeah.
There you are.
No longer.
Yes, I'm Bob Smith and I'm chairing this discussion tonight. And Fred Orlowski and Kristen Vivon will be participating in it as well. Not really, I'd love to have you explain exactly what you're expecting from us tonight because I have some concerns if it's one thing and I don't have concerns if it's another.
We have two things that we'd like to discuss. First, this is Agnes Ting. And she's going to be doing a self-storage on the parcel six up near the truck stop. That will be about a third of the area or maybe a little more. And we are excuse my backdrop. I'd like to be in the tropics, but I teach tropical agriculture. I taught my class. I took off for the tropics because it was too cold. But and we'd like to do growing cannabis on this lot. The lot is zoned commercial. And there is only one abutting home anywhere near the lot within the 300 feet. And no churches and no schools. But there is the town beach across 91, which we'd like a waiver for the 500 foot setback that is granted in the zoning bylaws that you can request that. We think this is justifiable because if you look from the town beach, and I could show you a picture of that, you can't see across it because 91 is elevated a good 20 feet, I estimate, above the level of the town beach. And the same on the other side at the grow site. So the grow site is not visible. And furthermore, And furthermore, not both sides of ninety-one are fenced. And nobody would be smart in walking across ninety-one dodging traffic. So um, we think this is a justifiable request for a waiver.
Okay, so um, am I to understand that you are actually. Applying for a waiver, but we have no, are you, or is this simply a discussion tonight?
This is a discussion because we we haven't formally um. Uh, done the application. We've we've got filled out the form and I've paid the fee. And then we would go back and and do all of the points listed in. One seventy-one, some because I forget, but whatever it is in the zoning bylaws. There's about, so last time we had eighteen different points that we had in our verbiage, which was signed off on.
Right, well, um. I, you, did you, you submit the application?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean. Now I'm a little bit confused because if we're having a discussion, that's one thing, but if there's a submitted application, I need to know from Mary, was the application, was the this meeting advertised for fourteen days ahead of time? Are we actually? Do we have to? No. So in other words, it's it's probably not a good idea to have submitted this. Correct?
I don't know.
Well, um, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks. We have. Um, I have in front of me an application for cultivation and a request for a waiver. And I would consider it an incomplete application. Now, I don't know whether you'd like to withdraw this piece of paper without prejudice. Or whether you want us to act on what I have received, in which case I would vote to declare it an incomplete application and that could have ramifications. So. Um, I don't know how how did other members feel. If we're just having a discussion, that's one thing, but I don't know what to do with this piece of paper and whether it starts the clock ticking. I checked with the town clerk this morning and this paper was filed this morning. So the application technically has been filed. But we haven't advertised it as a meeting, so I don't know what that means to us. Do you understand my dilemma?
I understand it and we intended it first and foremost to be an informal discussion tonight.
Okay, so we'll just make that assumption. And since that was filed today at the town clerk's office, Mary's going to have to deal with advertising and all that for a future meeting, correct?
Correct.
All right, so Fred and Kristen, is there anything you'd like to say about what? We've just heard.
Well, I don't know if we've seen the proposal, what's being developed there. Has that been submitted, a plan? I know you have, you tried.
The application has gone in, but no proposal has gone in yet.
So I I guess we can't act on anything without seeing what you're proposing to to do there. The the my my thoughts to just right now is uh. The our zoning talks, there's distinctions between open field cultivation and greenhouse cultivation. And I you're, I don't know what your application says, you need to be specific on what you're going to do there. Just to say to cultivate, to me, it is not acceptable. You need to be more specific. Are you going to establish or construct greenhouses there? Because I know there's no greenhouses there today. Or are you going to do open field? And that's different requirements for for zoning.
Correct.
Bylaws.
Yeah, we we will put in a formal application of all of the points that are covered in the bylaws.
Okay.
I just downloaded the form off the ZBA website and thought that we should get that in to start the process rolling. And I guess I didn't expect us to do anything as a vote or anything tonight. Until you see the the full application.
Okay, so, but but again, you need to be specific. What do you, what do you cultivate?
We will be. I, we will have very specific things.
Okay, and the other thing, somewhere I I saw you're asking for a waiver of three hundred feet and that that is, I think, in our bylaw somewhere. I would encourage you to to take a close look at where three hundred feet appears on that property or on I ninety-one. You're more than three hundred feet. My, to my measurement, you're more than three hundred feet from. The Tri-Town Beach. The the right away for I ninety-one is is more than three hundred feet. So I guess to say you want a three hundred foot waiver puts it in middle ninety-one and you can't.
No.
Get that close and and I would suggest you look at the the property line for the property you're proposing and buying and look at the setbacks that you have to be for that property line and then measure that distance to Tri-Town Beach. You're going to be well over three hundred feet.
Correct.
So.
The way it's written is that the distance should be five hundred feet.
Right.
We're not five hundred feet, so we're falling back to the restriction being three hundred feet if a waiver is granted. Not, and that doesn't say anything about how far we are, as long as we exceed, as long as the Tri-County Beach is beyond three hundred feet.
I I'm I'm fairly confident that when you present an entire plan, we'll be able to thoughtfully look at the request for for a waiver. Because as you know, we have granted one such request in the recent past. Which doesn't mean, because the law, the bylaw says that it is specifically our choice to the specific applicant.
I understand.
Right, and we would expect also some word on the host community agreement. Because we have in the past had applicants arrive to discuss marijuana growing or retail sales without having the host community agreement in place. And we've sent them, we've sent them back and put them off, you know, postponed for a month or so. So we would definitely, definitely want to hear about your host community agreement situation with the.
The select.
Board of Select Board, the Select Board. And then definitely would like to see some sort of surveyed, precise measurements of everything and and as Fred suggested, indoor versus outdoor. And then, of course, the issue of having two separate uses on the same lot. Um, I don't know if. If we've ever thought we we would have to look at that because one one use would be the self-storage facility and the other use would be marijuana cultivation. So we just, we would need to look at our bylaws and and make sure that there's no. I don't think there's a a problem with the multi-use, but we need to think about it. And of course, the abutters all need to be contacted and whoever controls Tri-Town. Is that's the Select Boards of Sunderland and Whately and?
There's a Tri-Town Beach Commission.
Okay, we would just, we would, you know, they need to be notified and that's. Part of the application process is the notification of of a butters.
Yes.
And I just, those are the only things that I can think of.
Right, and in our application, we will put from the Whately GIS access the three hundred foot abutter thing.
Okay.
And that doesn't list Tri-County as one of the abutters. So that means they're outside the three hundred foot.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So we'll put that in the application, so it clarifies that too.
All right. Is there any, is there anything else, Kristen or Fred, that you can think of that we want to make sure that we we have? Oh, you all, you got a pretty tough act to follow in terms of odor mitigation. So, because we'll be concerned.
You signed off on that for us once before and we're using the same sort of odor mitigation.
Okay, okay, well, I don't remember who voted on on that, but.
I think you were there.
Yeah, I was there and I, since this was just a an informal discussion.
Yeah.
In all likelihood, if your application appears for the April meeting, it would be the vice chair, Deborah Carney, who would be chairing the meeting because I'm the clerk. I got elevated because no one, no one, no one's left. So she would be actually chairing the hearings. I just wanted you to to know that, but as tonight Roger can't, so I stepped in just for this discussion purposes. Is there anything else that you would?
The the only other thing that we will do the formal application with all the details as we've done before. But for the self-storage, what is required for Ms. Ting to make an application? Does she have to to get a site approval for that?
Uh, you know.
Bylaws say that, I think you do, but.
Well, let me just look in the table of uses for a second and you can talk among yourselves.
I I don't think there's anything in there. You can look, Bob, but I I looked, I didn't.
On self-storage, there's no, so is it allowed by right?
No, I don't think so.
I don't think so because we, the self-storage that's that's over by the Wax Barn, we we met on that and we had to decide about Evans, Russ Evans runs that one, owns that one. So let me just look at the table of use regulations, page five.
It's hard to find, actually, though.
It really is. It's always hard to find in this. It's a stupid way of doing it.
Yeah, we have marijuana under agriculture, but it's not agriculture.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Well, there's. You know, there's a catch-all. The last one on page eleven talks about other principal uses. With appearance, operation, parking may impact.
Yeah, I mean, that's the catch-all in that is a in commercial industrial is a special permit is required.
As I remember seeing it, it was up near the top of the page.
The easiest thing to do would be to um. Run it up the flagpole with the building inspector and if he gives you a permit, you don't need us. If he says you got to go to the ZBA, he does. You do need us. That that would be, I mean, that's what we pay him to do, so.
When we do our site plan with the architect drawer, he's going to do it for both at the same time. He'll show it in relation, so that part will be done. And I think it all, all it says is a site plan is needed.
Yeah, right now I can't find it in particular. I'll I'll keep, I'll keep looking and if I find something, I will contact Mary to contact you.
Yep.
That I found something in particular, but my suggestion would be to go to the building inspector and he should be able to tell you whether it's a go or whether you need a some sort of special permit.
Yep.
What else, what else, folks?
I think we're good. We know what you want from us. And my apologies if you thought that we thought we were going to get more than we're getting tonight. I didn't intend that.
Okay.
I knew we had to do a formal verbiage right out.
Well, you can understand, you can understand my confusion with seeing, yeah, and I saw.
And I was just trying to get something in so we could get on the agenda. That was all.
Okay.
Okay, so Stephen, I guess I missed, and I don't know if you went through your PowerPoint on Monday, but I guess I'd like to see the PowerPoint if you could send it.
Yes, if you go to urban grown inc. Urban. Grown Inc. Dot com on the web, we have a webpage there. And in the middle at the top of there, there's a link to that meeting. And the PowerPoint is up there with two slides per page.
Okay. Also, I I believe that, Mary, we need physical documents for our records, so whatever you produce as as your presentation with maps and diagrams and charts and so forth. Um, it needs to be, is it okay now, Mary, to do it electronically or does it have to be?
We we really, we really need it electronically because.
Need it electronically.
See them otherwise, but physical documents still need to be delivered to town hall either by some shipper or some other way because people.
We can put them in that mailbox.
See them. Well, you can't. Here's, here's the current arrangement. Town Hall's closed right now. So they do, they probably won't fit in the outside box, but the vestibule is being left open for other things to be dropped off. Also, you can call the town clerk or email her and ask her to meet you there. She has been doing that for people too.
Okay, yeah.
And then electronic copies, if you could send them to Mary and Mary would distribute it, distribute them to the zoning board.
Right, you could, you may have my email address by now, but you can also.
I think I do.
To zba@whately@whately.com, but.
I can do it there as well. That goes to you.
Works also. Either one works.
Yeah, okay.
And I just want to let you know ahead of time that if you, if there are changes that you make to your plans along the way once the hearings get going, the town clerk is going to need updated copies of those plans. We we'd need to see the updated copies in electronic form for the hearings also.
Sure, and we don't have all of that done because we only had the foreman, so we'll be developing that. And when we get it done, we hope that it will be near final that we present to you.
Do you anticipate April or May or?
We'd like to get on the April agenda if we can.
Well, if you submit the application with the materials, then and give Mary enough time to, she needs fourteen days for posting.
Yeah, so we'd have. Yeah, so we'd have.
Wait, wait, three weeks ahead is really much better because I need time to put together the ad and submit it to the newspaper. They have to print it on the two Thursdays preceding the hearing. So I need to get it really soon.
Yeah, I understood.
We want to do it. The the next Thursday, the regular April meeting is April first. So it already has to be printed in the paper on the two preceding Thursdays.
Yep.
So, and once I send it to them, you know, the newspapers are low on personnel these days. They need time to get it all set up and send me a proof. I have to proofread it, call for any corrections that need to be made. And the deadlines, you know, are, you know, they they need a few days to get everything in place.
Yeah, so we will, we will communicate with you if we can make the April one. We will, if we can't, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Okay, so if if by if by three, well, I don't know, it's it's almost three weeks ahead of.
Yeah, I know, that's why.
May not be able to do it for April. Uh, but make sure that Lynn has everything that she needs at the town clerk's office and.
Yes, I have her email address.
She will, you have it.
Yep.
And her, you can always call her too. The the number is on on the website for the town. She has been willing to go meet people in the parking lot. That's what things are. That's the era these days.
Six six five forty-four hundred, extension three.
Yeah, next week I get my second jab in the arm, so.
Oh, good for you.
Good.
I hope you're all doing it.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, so we look forward to hearing from you in some more formal fashion.
Thank you and thanks for entertaining us a little bit tonight.
Okay.